A city council work session to order. It is seven or six, looks like 6:08. So if we could, Ms. Nyhagen, if you would lead our pledge to allegiance and our prayer.
Right.
Our dear heavenly father, we're so thankful that we can come together and work on the budget of the city. Please give us the information you need for us, Lord, that we will make the right decisions. We're thankful for our city. And father, I thank you for the council and for the staff. They do such a good job and we do thank you for that. And we ask this all and thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And don't forget this weekend to thank veterans.
So, the purpose of this evening is to take a look at some options for solution of our current $286,000 shortfall in budget. Mike, did we include the personnel prioritization this evening or we can do that later?
Maybe.
Okay. So with that, once again, Ms. Kilgore.
Is this one week?
The new one that I had laying there for you is current.
That's what we're using?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Get started here. So this is a recap of last time. Looking at the current expense fund, we have about 7.5 million in total. Recurring revenues at about 5.3-ish, 5.2, and recurring expenditures at 5.5 million. So we have a recurring deficit of about 284,000. We are meeting our policy ending fund balance of 20% of recurring revenues, which that threshold would be a million 52,000 and we are going to be at, right now, 1.474 million. Again, just a quick look at the revenue structure. You can see most of it is taxes, almost four and a half million. And then expenditures, our largest expenditures are our public safety departments and inter-fund transfers for debt service and equipment replacements primarily. So some notable items in the current expense budget for next year are that we've budgeted FTEs of 35.5. There were actually 46 requested. We have new positions of an additional patrol officer and an administrative position for community development to service not only community development but public works and building inspection, et cetera. And then we've added on here that additional public safety positions are needed if we can support them.
May I have, so they budgeted for 35.5 and they were asking for 46?
Correct.
Okay. But, okay, I want to make.
So we're running lean.
Well, at one time, the city had a little over 50 FTE. So we're running exceptionally.
And 35 and a half is more than what we have right now because that's adding two full-time positions, so.
And I just wanted to add as well the numbers that you see in front of you, that's also after Sarah and I, the budget cuts up about over 350,000 to signing.
We literally went through every single budget line and just trimmed down. I mean, we were looking at hundreds of dollars trying to trim down, not even just thousands, but we really scrutinized.
You want Mike to stop for a second?
Yeah, so we're, lean is an understatement.
So you're back in all the budget dust?
Yes, we have. Okay. Just a reminder that the budget does include these equipment replacement transfers because we want, we do want to fund our equipment for the future so that we're not, you know, up against a wall when something needs to be replaced. So there's 221,000 for fire and EMS and that does include 80,000 that's earmarked for a wildland fire vehicle. Then 62,000 is being transferred from the police department, building inspection and travel vehicles of 23,000, parks 10,000, and the total contribution from current expenses 316,000. And again, these are being transferred to Fund 320, which is the equipment replacement reserve. So the big problem, as the budget stands right now, is that we have a recurring deficit of approximately 285,000 in CE. And again, I'm restating there that recurring revenues and expenditures. So you can see, so we looked some more at possible revenue solutions during the last week and we still have that we could implement a tax on the water and wastewater utilities. We could implement a tab tax through the transportation benefit district. And then we also looked at the other utility taxes that we have currently in place and we do have the ability to increase cable and solid waste.
Does cable include internet?
I do not believe so. Just TVs.
Yes. No, it's, it's the cable bill, not.
Yeah, because I only, I don't get the TV and we get internet, but I get it from Charter.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be like, "Hike that sucker up." Yeah.
So electricity, gas, and telephone do have a maximum of 6% by statute without a vote of the people and that's what we currently charge. There's no limit on cable TV, but there is language in the regulations saying that they cannot be unduly discriminated against. So basically that means their rate needs to be comparable to other utilities. And then solid waste is actually just like water and wastewater where there's actually no limit at all on it. And we do currently impose that tax at 6%.
Solid waste is Carter, right?
Yes.
Wait, did you say we are currently already using a utility tax 6%?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. On solid waste?
No, I, okay, but on the, I thought you said on the utilities.
On.
On electricity, gas, telephone, cable, and solid waste, we're at 6% on all of those. We don't have water and wastewater.
Oh, right, okay.
Or cable?
We do have cable.
If cable is also at 6%?
Yes. All of the blue are all at 6% right now. We do have the ability though to raise the last two, cable and solid waste. So for instance, clearly we set the cable rate at 6% because that's the same as all the others, but if we were to impose a water, a wastewater, impose a water and wastewater tax and then maybe raise solid waste to match, then we could justify probably also raising cable to match because it would still be the same.
Like for 10%?
Yeah. Because we wouldn't, it wouldn't be out of line with other utilities at that point.
So, I'm sorry, I haven't read the end to see if these numbers are in there, but do you have comparisons on what's like wall?
This is Sarah, we're talking.
Well, I don't know.
I actually don't have cable and solid waste rates for Wal-a-Wal.
Oh, okay.
But we can look them up. Lisa kindly reminded me that I should do that this afternoon and I ran out of time. My computer is down for the last hour, so.
I don't know, that always helps.
Yeah. Okay. So looking at the possible solutions, the first line we'll look at again is water and wastewater utility tax. This would again be applied to all of the water purveyors within our city limits, so that would include Consolidated Irrigation District 14 and Green Tank. And I should have taken that second statement out, that we can't estimate Consolidated Irrigation because I actually did figure out a way John was able to with our GIS overlay, get me an outline of Consolidated Irrigation District and then he took all the addresses from within that and then imposed the city limits and took all the addresses within there. And so, anyway, I was able to estimate, so you'll see that in an upcoming slide.
Is that our new GIS system that you're using? Do we have that already?
We do have that.
But are you going to use some of these?
Cool.
What a thing to see, you guys.
So yeah, even when it was just College Place and Green Tank without District 14, it was basically right at about enough to fill our gap. So here's a picture of what it would look like to have a 6% water and wastewater tax. So about 280,000 from the College Place sales. So 280 from College Place, about 8,600 from District 14, and about 7,500 from Green Tank, for a total of about 295. That's the best estimate I can come up with.
Mr. Peterson.
Things come and go, you know, we have discussions and letters are written and sent out. Green Tank, now, the water district over by Shopko Spitzemberg, what is that?
That's Green Tank.
Green Tank.
So without going into, you know, I don't want to go into a lot of detail here, but there, a year ago or more, there were letters exchanged and there were, there were issues.
I can, I can, I can address that. There was funding available from the State Department of Health for consolidation of water purveyors. We, Green Tank has, has, has long resisted any kind of consolidation. The City of College Place, although they, they're small, they're underfunded, and they're currently unable to meet all of the requirements for, quote, a water system for this big department of health. But because they're not a water district, but they're an irrigation district, it requires a vote of the people being served to consolidate. And we approached them with a proposal that, can we take, let's take a look at this because we have funds to do this. They declined to even have somebody come in to look at what would be done with consolidation. In the meantime, when, when we have businesses or any kind of major development that goes on up there, we actually have to get their approval to put water, put particular fire suppression water in so people can build.
Almost parallel water-wise.
Not almost. Because they don't have enough water nor do they have enough pressure to provide adequate fire suppression.
So, and that's where we're at today?
That's where we're at today. On the other hand, District 14, they're essentially fully integrated with us. We actually run their system for them. They're hooked into our, our water management system. Water's exchanged all the time.
Okay.
So it will take significant pressure from the State Department of Health to get Green Tank to talk about consolidation.
So with our discussion right now, we, we still are able to tax?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
It's within the city.
We're back, I got it.
We can only tax, of course, their customers that are within the city limits.
Right, yeah. So, but even with that, okay. Thank you.
Yep. So these, this is again the 6%, which is what I showed you at the last meeting. And this includes District 14, which was not on the last meeting slide. So with just a water and wastewater tax at about 6%, we're at about 295. This again is a comparison of water, the water utility tax of various cities that are our neighbors or our counterparts, our peer cities, et cetera. So, and we did add a few in that weren't there last time, I believe. Chaney and Efrida are new in there. So you can see, the majority of them are kind of between at 10 and 15%.
Should be very competitive still.
With Wal-a-Wal at 13. I mean, so we say we're competitive, but who looks at that? Like when someone's moving, do they say, "Wait, I want to look at," I mean, of course they look at what an average bill is, but are, is someone going to say, maybe they would, for top niche, but like if an average bill is still a normal rate, it's still a normal rate or it comes out about the same or you're going to move them for a job anyway?
I mean, I'll, I'll tell you just from my experience with Beaver then, because this came up quite a bit.
But that's different.
When I worked there, if it's residents, they look at it, the only folks who do look at it, it's only if it's like to top niche levels.
Exactly.
It's commercial and industrial. They have a pro forma for cost of business.
Mr. Peterson, you have a question?
Well, you know, I think one of the issues here is what, a year from now, this is going to be, you know, we don't know what it's going to look like as far as the budget, but I think, I think the, you know, this is an easy answer and, and I'm afraid, you know, this is fine this year. I have no problem with, with us doing this, you know, pick a, pick a percentage, you know. But this is going to be something down the road. Next year, if we have a shortfall, will this be the first rock we look under?
Well, my understanding is that that's, like, this is kind of taking into account all of our recurring expenses, so it's setting us up basically.
But if we have more expenses next year.
Like if we wanted to add more, more positions again.
Right, and I'm not saying we wouldn't do this, but then, I mean, it's a two-sided thing here, right? We've got some flexibility here, we haven't gone to the max.
Right.
But on the other hand, it's going to be an easy place to go, like.
On the other hand, it's available, so.
Yeah.
Well, it's, looking from, from the operational point of view, what, what we've tried to focus on is, and Sarah's done a really, really great job with this, is, you know, we're, we, you never can meet all of the needs that you think you have. And what we want to focus on is making sure that when we, when we establish a need, that we look at that over the long term rather than saying, "Well, let's solve it today and next year we'll come back to the well." So do we, do we have, do we have more needs than would be funded by a 6% sales tax on, tax on that? Yeah. But in the longer term, where we're going to, where we're going to be able to, to grow a budget and to grow the city operations is if we develop very carefully more sales tax and appropriate property tax is really where the, is really where we need to get to it. You know, Mike's thinking two years, I'm thinking three to five. And as we grow, we can, we can start doing some other kinds of, we can do some other kinds of growth within the staff or within, within the city. But, you know, we haven't proposed going deeper into the ending fund balance because.
Which I appreciate.
Let's not do that.
Well, I mean, it's, we, and, and we've got some unknowns. We, you know, we've got, we've got College Avenue and what's going on with Scout Lake. Lord only knows what else is going to go south. And while, you know, we've set a million dollars as our ending fund balance that we're going to target, I'd much rather be a little above that than, than having to say, "This, this year the county's going to dip into their ending fund balance minimum."
They are?
Yep. And, but they're going to withhold their 1% property tax raise until two years from now. You know, 1% for the, 1% property tax raise and the county generates about $70,000 and they'll have 5% two years from now and they're going to, they're going to take all five two years from now. So, which would, you know, $350,000 is, is not insignificant, but, but what we've tried to target is to say, "What do we need today? We know where we want to go and, and we have a plan to get there, but what I don't want to do is to, is to try and take it all now and then dip into ending fund balance or to say, "Well, we can go back to the well next year and get more." Because honestly, there's, there's not that much well to get to. And while most people aren't going to object to seeing, you know, some, some utility tax along the way, we will have a wastewater, we will have a, a surface water, a runoff utility we have to do and that's going to tack on to people's utility bills. That's going to add costs, you know, we're going to end up hiring probably over the next two years another two people, an engineer, which is not an insignificant piece of funding to go through and some support to go along with that, the surface water utility that we're going to have to deal with. We think we're okay, at least for now, on our water utility plan and the funding. I think we're pretty stable for a couple of years on wastewater until we figure out what happens with, what we have to do with the plant and what the FETS do with the Clean Water Act. So our whole goal is to, is to try and not continue to go back to the well every year, but we do have some, we do have some immediate needs we need to fix and, but Mike's identified those.
Well, and the other thing is we have a unique gap in time here. What I mean by that is there, from an economic development standpoint, we're actually seeing speculative building with the residences of the Haven Homes, Polish Homes. There's even stuff going on along 125. And I think we're going to get a lot more of it, but that's contingent on our ability to be able to timely process this stuff. And we're already starting to get this reputation that we can properly get stuff done in a quick manner. And the problem is, once that keeps growing, is that pretty soon you don't get the chance to engage these folks. They'll just know that's how it is and they'll go and go to free water or Wal-a-Wal. So I do appreciate that position for community development does increase costs, but I would argue that it increases our opportunity to get, to get revenue and try to keep taxes in the future in check because it'll be over more priorities. Whereas if we don't do it now, we could shoot ourselves in the foot and then you basically have a static population and everyone else is giving business.
Ms. Helfer?
Well, and I agree with the general, just direction that you're laying out. And I think, I think economic development and public safety are the two places where it makes sense to invest at this point. Economic development because it brings us people and public safety because it keeps us from driving people away. So that's what I see as kind of the priorities, which I appreciate that, that's what you've prioritized in this budget. And I would love to be able to, you know, fill in all the other departments.
Well, we've got, we've got a prioritized list of 20 and it's only $2 million.
Yeah, so. Do you have a utility tax raise up?
A 50% utility tax looks really good.
Mike's, Mike's going to bring us lots of economic development.
Yeah, well, that's, and, and that's the real answer. Good argument.
Actually, and this may be, this is kind of a side note, but it's maybe a good place to just kind of drop it for a thought. One of my constituents was talking to me about how Wal-a-Wal is not allowing any more short-term rentals. They're setting a limit on it.
Yeah.
And they were saying, this constituent was saying, you know, we should, we have a lot of people, especially in the summer, who rent to students who have open space and we should be the place where we try and get people to come and stay. And then along with that, he said we should be working on allowing little mother-in-law annexes in our comprehensive plan update in our zoning. I mean, he didn't know comprehensive plan update.
Small homes and backyards.
Well, I'm just wanting to get to it because that's actually two pieces of subject rather than our percolator. With the comprehensive planning update, we are looking at the zoning code to make tweaks for that plus along College Avenue, there's been some interest in doing cart pods like Milwaukee.
Oh, cool.
Stuff like that, so to allow that. And then as far as the vacation rental situation, it's interesting you mention that because during our Economic Development Commission earlier this week, we did a strength, weakness, opportunity, threat exercise, and that was the number one thing listed as opportunity that basically we should seize what Wal-a-Wal just threw out banning and then capitalize and make money off of it, so.
The, there's, there's only been one, one voice about, concerned about a VR, an, an empty VRBO and it's, and it's down in the villages of Garrison Creek. We've only, at any given time, I've only been able to find between 10 and 15 people who are, who are doing Airbnb. It's, it's not a big deal here. The only thing, you know, we're going to have a workshop on this after the first of the year, we'll get the budget done and then we'll, we'll do that. The, my, you know, my only concern is parking, especially down here in the core of the city where, where the streets are small as it is. But I, I see it as an economic development issue and a, and, you know, personally, it's a property rights issue. When questioned about what's the, you know, what's the legal precedence for banning these, the answer, there is none. And it's not been, apparently it's not been tested in, in a higher court on whether or not a city has the authority to tell somebody that they can't do that with their personal property. So we'll see what, you know, everybody points to Bend, Oregon and Whitefish, Montana as an example of things that have gone, gone wrong. Well, we're not, we're neither Bend nor Whitefish. And, and I think, I think it's an opportunity for people to help offset costs. Parking is an issue and I think that's something that the city ordinance can address, but it's not something that I want, I don't want to get into a fight over somebody's property.
Yeah. I just thought I'd throw that out since somebody cornered me this week and was like, "You need to tell the city council."
Well, yeah, we are, we are going to have a workshop and kind of.
In Seattle has addressed this, it's an interesting look at what they've done, where they've done the smaller mini homes and backyards and there was a little bit of pushback, but I think, I don't know, I think overall it's, it's, I don't know. That's a different, obviously there's different issues over there, but.
I mean, the biggest, the biggest issue with a lot of our, a lot of our plotted land here is that it's small.
Yeah.
And it would be very difficult to meet setback requirements, putting another structure, a separate structure on a, on a lot, but there's no reason why you can't. Unless you live in my neighborhood, you can't.
Nigga.
Oh, it is, it's terrible. My God, you'd think if you want to put up a, a cabana in your backyard for your hot tub that you were.
I've heard that Portland has their in-law, both houses, they like property tax the bingesies out of them.
Yeah.
We should be that. I'm just kidding.
Well, I will, I will, I will tell you that property taxes in Portland are.
Super high.
Significant anyway.
State of Oregon.
Yeah, it's, it, having, having.
But they add that in then and then say what your income could be from that and tax you on that and that's just goes into your property tax as part of that.
Well, it's, you know, Oregon has an income tax.
Yeah.
Yeah, little sales tax.
I can't say that I'm particularly opposed to all of this stuff, but one concern I've had is that, and it's kind of more along Vancouver and northwest Washington, but I've been hearing a lot about foreign investors that are buying their properties to rent out, which tends to throw up the cost of buying property in the area for the people that do want to like live there full-time versus the, just renting. So that is a concern that I have.
Well, my son just bought a house in the, south of Capitol Hill in Seattle. And probably half the houses are, are foreign purchases.
There are, there are entire condominiums.
Yeah.
Owned by Chinese. They're mostly unoccupied, it's an investment.
You cannot own land in China as a private citizen. And so they, yeah.
They're, it is a fact, there's something, something, when I was reading, big blocks of vineyard in France are being bought by Chinese. So if you like Chateau Neuf de Pop.
And like London, nobody can hardly afford to live there, and then there's building after building after building that, you know, maybe on any given day, a tenth of it is occupied with that. And so you have all this empty space, and then you have people, you know, crowding in, paying a fortune for a closet.
But again, we're on the two-lane road to one of the counties without a stoplight, folks.
Yes.
I don't think we're quite at the risk of that kind of stuff happening, but it was a concern that if, you know, people do say, hey, this is a really great opportunity to buy a property and then rent it out, is that it will make it more difficult for people to...
Well, that's the example of Whitefish, Montana. Somewhat in Bend, but again, those kinds of purchases are focused around what else is available in the area. While wine tourism is marvelous, it's, we don't have a year-round activity here with, you know, if you...
Transit.
If you, in the summer, if you go downtown and look at the wine tourists, you can tell the ones that have been here about three days, because they're wandering around asking, what else is there to do?
And they're taking pictures of Macy's Theater.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we have, it's lovely here, it really is. It's great that we're here. There's a great quality of life, but I think people that buy here are looking to move here for the most part.
Yeah.
Because we were, once again, rated, I think, the number one retirement area in the nation based on cost of living, quality of life, healthcare. It doesn't get much better than here.
Yeah, I was just talking to a gentleman the other day. He was working out of his house in Seattle, working from home, and he was down here visiting. He could work out of his home in Walla. So he sells his house up there for eight hundred, nine hundred thousand, buys two fifty down here, and it doesn't make any difference, you know, he's working out of his house. Yeah, so, yeah, you see some of that. But they are moving here.
They're moving here. Hopefully driving the price of housing up.
Okay, so this slide is the wastewater comparison for the various cities. It's similar to the water rate one, water tax rate one. Then this slide, I'm showing on here the amount of revenue that would be generated at each of these percentages by each of the three purveyors in our city limits. So just, I put the one percent on here so you could see what each one percent would generate.
That's a good idea.
Then there's the six percent that we've discussed, and then I also put ten and fifteen so you could kind of get a comparison.
Mr. Peterson?
Real quickly, and you answered this question, I think, last, our last meeting, but, you know, one of the things we're going to have to be really clear here is when we do a comparison between Walla Walla and College Place and a total bill for water or sewage, we have to really make sure that we're considering all the components in the future as far as taxes. Because it's interesting, you know, we've done that comparison where we look really good on the water rates, and then you said, and I think we had validated that it did not include the tax.
It does not.
Right. And I just want to make sure that we don't get off the road in the future.
Sure.
And we start comparing, and we go, wow, we're thirty percent below Walla Walla. But at that point, you know, we've done some sort of, you know, the tax is not being allocated or recorded correctly. So anyway, I'm just, you know, it's something that makes me a little, we just need to keep eye on the ball, I guess, on that in the future.
Sure, yep. So, yeah, this, I guess, this is just water. Wait, no, it's for both, for us.
Water and swimming.
Yeah, both for College Place, and then these are just water. Any more comments on that before we move on to the TBD? Okay. So possible solution number two is to implement a tab tax through the TBD. Annually, that would generate approximately one hundred and twenty-five thousand. I originally thought that we would be, like, the year we implement it, we would only miss about a quarter of the revenue, but actually, the law says that you have to wait six months before you start collecting after it's been approved. So for the first year that we implemented, if we were to implement this at a twenty-dollar tab tax, we would actually only generate about sixty-three thousand. So that clearly doesn't even come close to filling the size of a gap that we have right now, but it could contribute towards filling that gap, so. This is a comparison of the different dollar amounts and how much they would generate in revenue. So I did a dollar just so you could see what each dollar would generate. So we have around sixty-three hundred registered vehicles in the city. And then I just basically multiplied that out by these different dollar amounts.
Could you remind me again, does Walla Walla do this currently?
Yes.
At twenty?
Twenty, I think, isn't it?
It's one of the few things that you can do without a vote.
I want to say with Walla Walla, theirs was the sales tax action.
Oh, it was, yep, it is.
I'll look again, but theirs was the sales tax.
It is, which is the vote of the people part.
Okay.
One. Okay, and then possible solution number three would be to raise the cable and solid waste utility taxes, which are both currently at six percent. And like I mentioned before, an option to look at might be to raise them to whatever, you know, if you were to impose a water and wastewater utility tax, maybe consider looking at raising the cable and solid waste to the same. And then you wouldn't have to, you could have a lower rate across the board if you have it on more utilities. So this is a chart that just shows you what, you know, each percentage tax would bring in. So this is where we're at on these two right now. Solid waste brings in about fifty-five thousand a year, and cable brings in about seventy thousand a year.
So the two together, each one percent brings in about twenty?
Yep.
So if we went from like six to ten, that'd be about another eighty grand?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Thank you, this is very helpful.
Here, you're welcome.
I appreciate that you pulled this together so quickly.
Okay. So this is just a list of the sort of pieces of the budget that we would like to fund or think about funding. So the community development admin position, which is an annual cost of about seventy-five thousand, and that includes all the benefits and taxes associated with that employee. Police and fire department training officers are each around ninety-five thousand a year.
Mr. Peterson?
This isn't the budget now?
No, the community development admin is, and one police officer is. The rest of this is not.
So just those two? Okay.
Ms. Helfer?
Those two are in and part of that two hundred and eighty-three lawsuit. They're not the total of the two hundred and eighty-three red.
So another thing that we've talked about is trying to implement a take-home vehicle program for patrol officers to sort of help out with the staffing shortage by increasing the efficiency of the people we do currently have on staff.
And that's per vehicle?
This is the cost of buying used vehicles and outfitting them.
How many?
Four. We would need to add four vehicles. But the problem, the only problem with this is it's not just a one-time cost. We would have operations and maintenance costs of about twelve thousand a year, increased by my calculations for those four vehicles total. And then if we were, eventually, they're going to need to be replaced. And, you know, maybe we just continue buying used ones, but if we were to eventually try to replace them with new ones and get them circulating in our fleet like all of the other vehicles, that would take about thirty thousand dollars a year to fund.
Yep. State Patrol turns over their patrol vehicles about twice every two years.
I don't know about State Patrol, the ones that I was looking at, is that Washington State University has their own police department. When I was in Colfax, we just kept buying vehicles off them because they rotate all of theirs every two years, so.
The State Patrol, I think, is based on mileage, but it's about a two-year.
If we added, I guess, one a year, that'd be like thirty thousand dollars, oh, no, I guess a little bit less, but ultimately, we add, after adding all four, it'd be twelve thousand a year plus would be twenty thousand per vehicle. So if we found something, you know, an increase in budget somewhere around like thirty-five thousand, we could add one a year and provide for the maintenance costs?
Oh, no, that's for the four.
Right.
Yeah, so...
I would say after the four years, the maintenance costs would be about twelve thousand, and if you were adding twenty thousand, somewhere in there, we'd kind of get in that range.
Yeah.
We could squeeze that out somewhere.
But if we did decide to just say we're always going to do used vehicles, then our replacement transfer should be much smaller, right?
Yeah. But other than caution, I mean, hopefully they'll keep doing it that way, but that's taken into account that Washington State University keeps throwing away money on new vehicles every two years, which they've had for the past couple of decades, so hopefully it'll continue.
And the patrol.
Yeah.
And Mike, our only resources in WSU, I mean, there's, I mean, right, I mean...
Yeah, it's...
A Washington Patrol, or, I'm sure everybody wants, lined up, waiting to get their camp, so, yeah.
And the other thing I might add with this as well, that I feel we didn't really do proper justice to the last time, was the fire department training officer, because we really were focused on the police, because Kurt was talking about the LEAP and so forth, and then community development. But I was talking with David, and then watching, I went to one of their volunteer exercises, and they're having a significant problem being able to plan and execute all the training appropriately, train the volunteers, because they're having a lot of calls to the nursing facilities and assisted living facilities, plus they're having to do the training. And then we're having a case with the volunteers where with some of them, they want to be trained better by other agencies, and we're actually having quite a bit of turnover right now. So since I've witnessed what I witnessed, I would say that that's a fairly important thing, too. We didn't really talk about that the last time, and if that was implemented, I think that'd go a long way for a long time, since the majority of that department is volunteer. And the main premise behind that naturally is training the volunteers, so.
So I'm sorry, what we're talking about here, we've got seventy-five thousand, we've got ninety-five thousand. That is part of the two seventy-five shortfall. We just came up with a six percent that takes care of the two seventy-five. So now what we're talking about is things in excess of two seventy-five.
Yeah, yeah, things in excess of two seventy-five, which are percolating at the top, that are concerns or issues, if you will. And I'm just adding some context to that, because if the last time, we didn't say anything about that fire position, it was mentioned casually in the documentation, but we didn't really talk about it. And I just want to express that law police is a concern from the staffing standpoint. I view the fire department almost like a living document, because you are rotating volunteers, and trying to get volunteers is really, really hard. David does a great job here. I wish we had that amount of volunteers at Colfax, but the fact that it mattered because we're having issues executing the training, and it is endangering our long-term success with that, and we are starting to see the number of volunteers shift the other way, which is a warden sign, so.
So if we went to ten percent, we had talked in the past about the ten percent would allow two officers, but if we went to ten percent, we could do an officer, and we could do the, we could...
Yeah.
Or Troy was actually saying, and this may have been kind of after the meeting, that he may want to sort of phase in the officer and first do the take-home vehicles. And I think both the training officer and the take-home vehicles are like really important for retention, and we've had so much turnover in both of those departments, and turnover is really expensive.
Well, it's, and it's...
Because of the training.
You know, it's a six-month process, once we hire and send them off to the academy, and sometimes it's a couple of months before we can get anybody into the academy.
And then if they get injured during their training, and then that stretches out, because we've had that happen, and...
Yes, all of the above.
And I would just like to add something, too, just because while I'm in the community, I've heard this question, so for the record, I just want to throw it out there, since I've heard that. I've heard a lot of people say, oh, the fire department will just annex in a district or go deal with Walla Walla. What my concern is there is you're really masking the cost. Folks think that's the panacea where magically your cost goes down. However, all that's happened, and a lot of citizens don't realize the bargain they're given at the property and retail taxation level here, the fact that you have all of that within just the little bit that the city's charging. So hypothetically, let's say it would go to a district or something, that's another property tax on top of the city property tax, typically around fifty cents per thousand, so you're actually paying way more. And then City of Walla Walla, if you look at their revenue levels and just the union contract over there, it pretty much mirrors the same thing. So I just want to get that out there, that on paper and philosophically, that may look like a solution. It actually costs way more going that way. We have a pretty good bargain going on right now.
Highest paid individual. The city of Walla Walla is a firefighter.
We've, over the past several years, and I've been here several years, it's been brought up about, you know, going together. The community will never forget.
It's free.
Just three times, I know, at least. I'm sorry.
So the total here, if we do two police officers, is four eighty-two. So that includes eighty thousand dollars in cars, plus twelve thousand for one year, and thirty thousand dollars for one year of the replacement transfer. So four eighty-two, but one seventy of that, one police officer and the community development person were included in the two eighty-three lawsuit.
Right.
So we add, take that out, so it's three hundred and twelve thousand now is the new money from here, plus the two eighty-three shortfall, so it's five ninety-five shortfall if we do everything here. So if we did the ten percent, it's just under fifty thousand, right? It's like forty-eight thousand on the, what are we talking about? Wastewater and water, and then increase cable and solid waste by four percent, because they're at six, so bring those also up to ten. This is pretty darn close.
It's, it actually...
Like, what was the other option?
Well, it actually covers that entire package.
What? We didn't, which rates?
The ten percent.
The ten percent.
The ten percent.
Bring the...
The ten percent would cover the ten percent of water, wastewater, solid waste, and cable would...
Bringing those up four, and bringing the other up to ten.
Ten would get us take-home police cars, two patrol officers, a fire training officer, and the administrative support for community.
Great, sold. Yeah, this is a great meeting, guys.
Put it down.
Yeah.
Although, I, well, I do, I do think we should talk about the tab tax.
The what?
The tab tax. I think I've quite gotten through my slide. I have a little bit more on that, so if you want me to...
Please, yes, please keep going.
I had to skip ahead for a minute.
Okay, so I only have one more, but it's where I kind of talk about that. So water and wastewater utility tax would adequately fund the hole that we have right now. The TBD tax alone is inadequate, but I stated on here that it probably should be considered for a slow implementation. I think if you at least get it going at a small amount, maybe the five dollars or ten dollars.
Fifty cents a year for forty years. Michael, would that make you happy?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I don't know if that's going to matter.
I have a question on that there. Are we limited to twenty dollars total before it goes to vote, or twenty dollars?
The first year. We can raise it ten dollars after two years, right? So up to thirty after it's been in place for two years. But the most you can implement is twenty dollars at one. But the most you can implement is twenty dollars at once.
Let's do a dollar, make it easier.
Let's do five.
Five dollars? I would, Michael wants five dollars.
Yeah, a hundred bucks.
Step by house.
That's right.
Head to the hills.
Well, it is, it is, it is a dedicated, the TBD funding is a dedicated funding stream for streets.
Local roads.
Roadways.
Well, it turns out.
Are you many listening?
Northwest Third, too.
Well, and I think that.
We can repay that, like, get all the sidewalks in for what, thirteen thousand dollars in the actual cost?
Yeah.
About that?
Not a big deal.
I think the thing, long-term, we need to be looking at streets. I think a lot of folks, it's a misnomer, where people think the street's just magic, we get done, and it's not a general, and it just happens. Really, in most other states besides here, streets are treated as a utility, and there's just an assessment that's plopped on your license. You don't really get a say in it, because that's something, since I moved to Washington, it's hard to reconcile police in my brain, because you have the streets, but yet it isn't really being paid for for folks using said streets.
But Washington State has a gasoline sales tax that's much more severe than in Oregon. And that.
At one time it was the highest gasoline sales tax.
And, you know, and I'm, yeah, ninety percent of it goes to Olympia, you know? But we do get some of that, you know, but, yeah.
But it is.
Local roads.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, I-690, even if I-695 funding stayed level, we wouldn't be talking here today.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, really, what you're seeing here is Sarah and I have tried to cut to the bone of everything, but the fact that it matters is when you run what's pretty much a full-service city, there's a cost to doing business. And we're just at that point where, at least from everything I've seen with the strategic planning exercise, it seemed like what people in the surveys indicated they wanted. Plus, just folks who've in general been in communication with the city, this is really what's needed to get there. Otherwise, it's going to get to a point where we're going to have to pick a service to stop doing, but then you're going to still end up paying more, just not to the city, to someone else, so.
So I think, I think, you know, it seems the consensus is to look at the ten percent utility tax for water and wastewater. We'll need to visit with you again on stormwater utility, you know? Well.
But that won't be for this budget.
No, that'll be for the two thousand nineteen budget.
Yeah.
And probably, actually probably beyond that.
And I have to admit, given that, the stormwater utility and our desire to join into a library, I'm kind of tempted to just say, bite the bullet and only raise the tabs once, just go to twenty. But on the other hand, I'm also tempted that it seems like people are really touching about the tabs.
Yeah, it's hard to gauge, like, what will, you know, activate their ire towards us.
Which I don't.
The thing about the tabs, though, is everybody gets them at a different time of year, so.
So we'll get complaints all year long?
Yeah, but nobody, there never will be the critical mass for an actual mob.
There's a silver lining.
Yeah.
Well, it's interesting, the state actually has a projection on how many, what percentage per month. You know, it's, the TAB reissue is highest in the, I looked at it, it's fascinating. A TAB reissue is highest in the summer month, I don't, that's got to be reflective of when people buy cars.
There just has to be fantastic communication with the citizens of this town. I mean, we're talking about billboards, where we go, here's our water rates, here's Walla Walla's water rates, here's TABs in Walla Walla, here's TABs in College Place. I mean, and we probably wouldn't go that far, but what I'm saying is.
Post it on the Facebook page.
That communication has to happen, because all of a sudden, people flip out. We didn't know ten, fifteen minutes ago whether or not the twenty dollars were on the TABs in Walla Walla, and, you know, or it was a tax. And so how is Jane Doe, or whoever going to know out there, they're going to be ticked, you know?
Well, it's, one of the, one of the things that, that we really have to focus on is communication on what a budget really is. I mean, it's, people look at their property tax and tell me, oh, will you guys get all that money?
Right.
And, and, you know, I have to remind, well, no, you know, the school district takes over half of your taxes, your property taxes, and I don't get any of that.
And the twenty bucks is going to go to your streets, right?
Yeah, right. I mean, that's a, it's.
Until my mom, we were considering it, and she was like, no, and I'm like, go to the streets, and she's like, yes!
No, 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 I think that's.
Exactly what it is.
I mean, it's, that's, it's.
It can only go to the streets, I think that's a really important message.
Does the whole money come here to College Place?
Yes.
Yes, it's ours.
And, I mean, but I think it's the same thing with the education on if or when people notice, or whenever Andy publishes the, an increase in the city tax is.
Yeah.
What is it getting you? So like, if we preemptively say, you know, this is what we've chosen to do as a body, as representatives of us, we want to make sure that you're protected, these are the police, this is a police officer, we want to work on economic growth, this is this person. And the cost, maybe we don't say the cost necessarily, or we can, and say, this is how we're offsetting it.
Yeah, I mean, well, a perfect example, and Ms. Selby knows this very well, we had to use a backhoe to fight a fire.
Right.
I thought it was pretty fascinating.
Across the street from my house.
Yeah, but.
It's scary.
But the people that were fighting that fire, with one, well, there were two, there were, there was one of our policemen, that's also a volunteer fireman, one of our public works guys, that's also a volunteer fireman, and six or eight volunteers, and these were all kids, I'm not, I mean, they could be my grandchildren.
I got a lot of detail because a number of them are engineering students, and so I'm like, so, tell me about what you were doing yesterday.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and.
They'll suspect.
It's.
No, saw them out there, so I knew.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was fascinating to watch that as it all went through, training for those kids. I mean, they're all heading off to go to EMT training in the midst of, you know, one of the others wants to stand up in a bucket of the backhoe so he can focus down. I just looked, put my fingers in my ears and said, no, 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 don't say that.
Everything Christian says is a good idea is not necessarily a good idea.
Oh, yeah.
But, but, but to your point, if we can go to people and say, I understand your water bill's going to go up ten dollars a month, at the highest levels in the summer. But with that, we're going to be able to put an extra patrolman on the street, and we're going to be able to enhance our fire suppression capabilities in the town.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Public protection.
And also, we know that Sarah and Mike have, like, gone over the budgets, every line item, that we're, it's not like we're here with a, we're going to do a council retreat in Fiji, because that makes.
That sounds like a good idea.
But, you know, we're, I.
We named this tailor for you.
But I'm not, I haven't heard from people in College Place, possible, that I just haven't had those conversations, but I haven't heard people complaining that College Place is known for just wasting money. And so the fact that, you know, we're not spending five hundred thousand dollars on a library that some people will benefit from, this is something that everyone's benefiting from, and will probably feel the real effects of it pretty quick.
Yeah.
Not the money, but like the actual benefit of having police presence, fire presence, all this other.
And I don't know what they're doing right now, but I have just noticed lately, our patrol, our police patrol car is out more driving around. And maybe it's just I'm more cognizant of it, or something like that. But I'm seeing, when I, yeah, so that, that's visible.
That's what people are going to get, more.
And when I talk to people, I, I mean, there's always the eye-rolling about taxes, but I hear a lot more of, you know, hey, we like this, we want more police, we want, you know, this, we want that, rather than, you know, how dare you raise our taxes? And let me remind you of the public comment that we got on our water bill.
Right.
Which was, maybe you should raise it higher, because we don't want to be flint.
Right.
And, you know, so.
My only concern is that we have, well, my only concern is that we have not said no to increases here for, it's been yes, 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 down, I mean.
Because years ago, all they said was no.
I agree with you, and I'm not saying that any of them were bad decisions. What I'm saying is, I'm, I, there's this, in the back of my conscience, I'm wondering, when does that threshold arrive?
Well, but it's going to go away, right, as soon as we get some of these contracts that Mike is working on? So it's like, to me, right, Mike, no pressure, but like, I'm kind of looking at it as, you know, we need to make some of this stuff where we all kind of like, inch in and contribute, and then.
Right.
So Ms. Kildore, and then Ms. Nysel, and then Mr. Cleveland.
I was just going to say that because we haven't done this stuff for so many years, it's a lot right now. But we really are catching up for the time that the city was afraid, administration was afraid to ask, or the council was just saying no, or whatever, for so many years, it didn't happen when it should have, but it feels like a lot right now, but.
Was it a conservative council?
I'm sorry?
Was it a conservative council?
Mark just got.
No, I, you know, I believe it was the makeup of the city people. We're getting more younger people in the city now, you know? I mean, and when you think about a lot of seniors, and they have just one check coming in, and it's, this is it. But I think it's, I think it was more the makeup of the city, I don't think the council. It was, we realized that we needed the money. And I'll tell you something, you said it, you say that you're going to spend the money on police officers and fire department, they'll say, we'll give you any amount you want, that's true. And now, and more and more now that I hear, they understand that water and everything like that is going up. And I think that people are getting more intelligent to what happens with taxes, looks what's happened with the government, you know, that's coming up. I think that they're getting more aware that you can't just keep, keep it at this level, because things are going up and you got to pay for them.
My, my classic explanation for this is, we get one percent property tax increase a year.
Yeah, yeah.
Our cost, our big cost is people, and our people costs go up five to seven percent a year.
And they realize now that, we've had these roads that we fixed, and we're getting, you know.
Ms. Kildore.
Yeah, thank you. The one other thing I wanted to say was, I did find Walla Walla's tax on their solid waste or garbage service is also thirteen percent. I haven't found their cable rate yet, but I'll keep looking.
Ms. Nysel.
I just wanted to relay a phone call that I received this afternoon. And the lady basically called to tell me how thankful she was about the events that we're having, and how she really appreciated the direction we were going, and that, she said it's the first time that she feels like we have an identity of ourselves, rather than just having to do things in Walla Walla.
Mr. Cleveland.
You know, everything we've talked about here that we'd like to have, I think is extremely justifiable. And, you know, I think I do support increasing taxes. The question I have is like the speed, like Lauren was saying. You know, we've said yes to a lot of stuff, and yes, we do have to play catch-up here. So I think really the question we're faced with now is like, how quickly do we want to implement this? Do we want to rip the mandate off at once, or are we going to, you know, go at a, you know, slower rate?
Ms. Selby.
I, I've shared those concerns, because it's like, wow, I just got on the council and all I do is raise taxes. So I actually asked Mike, I said, this was a couple of months ago, I'm like, can you give me a list of all the taxes that we've raised recently? And I was actually pretty surprised at how low it really was, because it's, we've talked about it a lot, and I think that's one good thing that Mike has done, is it doesn't just come up in a meeting and it's yes or no. He's given us lots of, you know, how to get there.
Education.
Yeah, lots of education, which is important. And, and we've done it in a lot of different places, but when you add it all up, it really has not been nearly as much as I thought.
And looking at, we've approached fee increases from the standpoint of, not today, not tomorrow, but ten years down the road, so that we shouldn't, you know, we're always going, you know, nothing is foolproof, because fools are so ingenious, but. But I think we've got a pretty long view, so I don't think we're going to get any big surprises. Or at least, if we get a big surprise, it's something that.
It'll be regional.
It's going to be regional, it's going to be another unfunded mandate from somebody. But I think, I think we're, I think we're pretty stable in how we approach things. Just, what's it called?
Well, and I would say the other thing would be in proactive, and the positions we really need is we're maintaining the ability to keep stuff within our local control, where we're controlling outputs and inputs. Because honestly, in normal circumstances, in other places I've worked at, usually, I'm for regionalization events. However, with that being said, when I've met with the district and some of our neighbors, you, one quickly realizes that if you jumped into that boat, the amount of taxes and other cost measures would skyrocket, and you would, at that point in time, you basically just have to say yes, there's no control anymore. So therefore, I really think it behooves us, as we're trying to create our own identity, make sure that we're the more reasonable alternative in the central Walla Walla Valley, it really behooves us to do everything we can to try to keep our services and the people who work here happy and so forth, because really taxpayers get already getting here.
Mr. Cleveland.
I'm inclined to suggest that we go for a six percent increase with the utilities that we don't have, and maybe do like, a kind of like, you know, we got these expenses, they seem extremely essential, what we're paying for here. I'm thinking like sixty percent implemented this year to cover our budget shortfall, maybe a little extra of the forty percent next year, not quite ripping the full mandate out all at once, but just a little bit of like a two-year phase in. Like, that's, I think would be kind of my ideal.
Well, that, well, the ten percent covers the expenses, that what you just said will not cover our expenses.
The shortfall not expenses?
The six percent.
The six percent will not cover, will not cover the fire.
It will cover the original.
Right.
But if you add the other things that we wanted, it will cover that.
So then you're saying, do not do the fire training, do not, or the cars?
I would think, like, we could do, geez, I mean, there was a couple of other things you were doing, such as the tabs. Like, five-dollar tabs.
If I understood correctly, if we don't do the ten percent, we do not do the fire, the ninety-five thousand, and we do not do the cars.
Yeah, extra, extra play.
Yeah.
Well, we are adding people this year anyway, and if we did it over two years, it'd just be a little bit less of a shock. But you feel, you feel that we should do it all.
I can't support that, but.
Do you, yeah, I'm, what, how many, what's our population? Seven, nine thousand?
Nine thousand four hundred.
So what's this a person? Like, I know that not everybody pays, I'm just, I was.
So I did a total of.
Sixty-three dollars a year a person?
Yeah, actually, yeah, about that.
Yeah.
Divide by twelve.
Yeah.
Five bucks and change a month.
Do you have five dollars a month?
Yep. Hey, Mike, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be too severe, I'm just saying that if we don't, if we don't do the ten, we're going to be talking about, a year from now, we're going to be talking about firemen leaving, we're going to be talking about.
This kind of just gets us a little bit, it hurts, but it gives us just enough to basically empower our staff to now bring us, bring us through the way.
And it's easy, and it's easier to go in with like ten now, and then to go in at six, and then a week, a while longer, say, we want more.
Wouldn't happen.
So we're thinking like rip the band out at once?
Actually, what we're talking about is shaving the arm, then putting the bandaid on.
When you said rip the band-aid, I thought you were talking about the twenty-dollar fees.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, I do want to.
No, no, and I, you know.
But that one, I give a little bit caution to, because again, because we ignite the ire, but it sounds like we're supporting here, we need this so badly that we should do the ten percent this year, cover, cover this stuff, get it going, get it down the pipeline.
Yeah.
Right.
I come up with five dollars and thirty-five cents a month per person.
Well, I guess, I hate to do it, but I'm inclined to agree.
That's a latte, isn't it?
Guess I'll have to give up a latte.
One latte.
We have slightly different numbers.
One latte for a police officer, fire training, and getting some good benefits for our.
One latte for a police officer, fire training, and getting some good benefits for our police officers.
I round it some numbers, maybe that's why.
A month sounds reasonable.
One question I had, and I have my last, you know, the pool funding isn't the budget correct for them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Those are the, the two things that we, there's, is it $5,000 this year for the World War II memorial?
Yes.
And then 12, we, we agreed to 12.5 a year for four years for the pool.
We can't reneg on those commitments, in my opinion.
Well, well, you can, I was like.
Actually, the pool's more than paying for itself. That's the, the problem with.
That's excellent.
Yeah. Um, what was the outcome of the EMS discussion with the city of Walla Walla? Is that still an open issue?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, I don't need it.
Well, the, the, the issue with that, we have, we are now licensed, we are now a licensed transport agency.
Hmm.
We could transport, we're not yet.
That's like basic, right? Not advanced?
Not advanced, yeah, but we would, we'd generate a huge amount of cost. We, we will eventually be able to transport, and actually, that probably will be close to self-supporting.
In this addition of this member would augment that?
No.
No.
The, the, but what it, what it will do is get them prepared to do that. City of Walla Walla is now trying to figure out what to do because they're basically, we're the only one that hasn't told them, you know, not nobody, you know, hell no, uh, we're not gonna pay your money. And, and so, I, they're, I think they're rethinking how they approach it. Initially, it was several hundred thousand dollars they wanted.
They set themselves in the flood, you know?
Then, and then it backed down to what, 80,000 that they were thinking?
Yeah, originally, when they approached me, it was near 500,000. Then it went to 80, I've heard, I've heard the other numbers. I mean, really what it comes down to is my original comment about they set themselves up where it's just unsustainable revenue versus expenditure string. And, uh, really, the last kind, uh, comment I have on that, and, and we're probably gonna have to talk about that to regional EMS boards and so forth, but the last I heard and David heard about that is pretty much after 2019, they just wanted to pull all their ambulance services to the, their own city border and pretty much be, well, tough luck, pay us otherwise. Uh, so VLS, we can do VLS, we're just gonna have to go through the, uh, regional EMS board to fight on the ALS side, 'cause to my understanding, they can't be doing that because they, at least from the advanced life support standpoint, that was what they lobbied on in the first place to get that license, so it's a misnomer that they can do that.
Yeah.
Uh, but I think that just proves though, that for the basic, base, uh, basic life support, that really will do better for ourselves and the taxpayer and protect everyone if we control that within our wheelhouse, 'cause all the back and forth, I mean, it just shows, so.
Well, and, and like you're saying, where they kind of, they've, they've been working on this structure for years, right? It's been coming up, and, and we're different, right? Our, our fire department is volunteer, so we're not really, I mean, David's been here for however many years he just got that pin for, and, but with everyone else, we don't have the same personnel costs, is what I'm saying. Like, so even down the road, as we continue to grow our volunteer base or whatever, I, it'd be great to know that we're not kind of going down that same path, right? We're just gonna start hiring, overpaying.
No, we, we definitely aren't, we're a combination fire department. And from a staffing level right now, I know I always go back to these examples, but I think it's good to show black and white. Uh, staffing wise in our fire department, and think about this, we are the exact same number of fire that we were in Colfax, for, from a staffing standpoint. We had a fire chief and two folks. Colfax has 2,800 people, we have 9,400 people in a university, so when you compare those two, it's a bit alarming, so.
Ms. Sylvie.
Well, and as a person who, literally, I teach a number of this people who are volunteer firefighters, and they keep, you know, they come in, you hope, they hope to get them in as freshmen or sophomores so that they can get four, or five, six years out of them, depending on. But I, you know, we need a training officer.
Yeah.
You know? Um, these guys do not understand the concept of personal risk.
They're bull, yeah, they're.
They, they are convinced that they are bulletproof and can jump off roofs and everything else, and they really can't.
So if I, if I could summarize, I think the, the council's position is, is that we should implement a 10% utility tax on water and wastewater.
Yes.
Raise the cable and solid waste taxes to 10%. I don't think we have yet come to consensus on the licensed tabs, and, and given our current, given the, the, the current projections, that's not gonna pose a real issue on the 2018 and probably 2019 budget. Um, and it's, it's, it would be at the council's pleasure if they wanted to devote additional funding to strictly roads, and that could come from, I think, I think I would be more comfortable if we had some estimates from Public Works and Engineering on what that would do to our current backlog of, of roadwork.
Um, so, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say that the tab tax would just relieve current expense more.
Well, that's. Or we could continue doing what we do for current, with current expense now into streets and add the tab tax.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, that's the.
That's where we've just, cost savings is when we're starting to invest more in, say, preventative maintenance.
Yep.
Right.
So that's some stuff from down the road.
I, I, my suggestion would be that we vote on the budget that includes these, and then we vote on the tab tax as basically a separate thing.
Yeah, 'cause that's not part, that doesn't have to be like the, I guess we can, if the tax, we want to.
Yeah.
But like, we're kind of doing this in conjunction with the budget, and we could revisit the tab thing like in the morning.
Okay, yeah.
Or, I mean, I would be, I would be fine doing it at the same time, but I just think it should be a separate thing.
Discussion.
Yeah.
And I, I think if we had a little more detail from engineering and public works on, you know, if we had more money, what would we do?
I mean, but.
Should we do more maintenance, or should we put, put it in the capital?
Well, I guess, yeah, it'd be great to have a plan, but I also don't wanna take away staff time when we know that we need street money. Like, I don't wanna.
Well, I don't, I don't, this isn't gonna generate a lot of staff time.
Okay, 'cause I'm just saying, like, it'd be great if I'd have been doing a presentation, but we all know that.
Yeah.
They actually had most of that already when we were working through that council.
Right, yeah.
It's all there, it's just, you need to see it.
The chip and seal, yeah.
So I'm still not clear, do you want me to put $5 tab tax in the budget numbers?
No.
No.
No, okay.
We may do a budget amendment.
We, we don't know what's coming down the road, we may find that we gotta go to that well at some point, too, down the road, you know, and, yeah.
Well, and if.
Keep using the well metaphor.
Well, what, 'cause what I would like to see us do, ideally, is keep putting the money from the current expense into street maintenance, and use the tabs, hope to use the tabs for, um, construction or reconstruction, Broadway, et cetera. But we know that that's almost like, it, it's kind of like a contingency, because as that money, it's gonna take a while for that money to build up to be high enough to actually do the kind of project.
We're 18 months.
But if we, if we end up needing to give less from the street fund, less from the current expenses into the street fund, we at least have some money in the street fund. So, but I mean, I was, I still think part of our current expenses should go to streets.
You know, it was interesting, I, I think this is, we, we cannot be told, I don't think, what the actual sales tax from like Walmart is on the city, I think that's like a.
Right, confidential.
That's confidential, yeah. I think what I had heard though, um, was that just that sales taxes was basically is what's keeping the streets, uh, is funding the chip and seal and the repairs, and so we have a, a business outlet that's basically funding, and I may be off on that, it may have changed since that last conversation took place, but, so that just tells you, yeah, the impact of, um, yeah, sales tax or without.
Without Home Depot and, and Walmart, we'd be in a world of hurt.
Yep.
That, you know, the only reason that we weren't in World Report before their arrival was because of the motor vehicle access tax.
I am so proud of myself, I took so much anger and hate when I was working to get Walmart and Home, Home Depot, I mean, people, I mean, really were angry, some, some people were, really, don't you dare vote for that, don't you dare. And it was a, quite a, quite a thing.
Yeah.
And it, it's, it's been one of the greatest things that's happened, Home Depot and Walmart, and it's wonderful.
I cornered Costco executives over in Tri-Cities, they were walking around in their suits and their fresh haircuts, looking at stuff, and I walked over there and said, why don't you have a dressing room here?
Oh, yeah.
Like what REI, RE, RE, whatever.
REI?
Yeah. Oh, okay. I said, well, you know, and so he looked at me and he said, he said, I like your shirt. And I said, and why aren't you putting a store in College Place in Walla Walla, you know? And he mumbled a little bit, and we talked about a few other things, but it was interesting, you know, all the, all the suits were there wandering around, you know? And anyway, for, for what it's worth, but, um, um, yeah, they, they soon forgot about me and went on to something else, but.
Well, you have my kudos for cornering them.
Oh, no, yeah, I saw, it was a target of opportunity, and it, it was a positive exchange, it wasn't tough, but it was.
No shouting involved?
No, pushing.
Just pushing?
Did pull them off the lawnmower and break the road, turning, but.
Well, well, I'll just put this much for Costco, in addition to calling them last time, I was in Chicago to see my parents, I actually, 'cause I know where their broker is at, 'cause I worked with them while I was in the South suburbs, I actually went over there and harassed them, I continued to do so my very Christmas.
I'll be there next week, I'll be there next week, where do I go?
Party for the house.
Hey, I'll give you an address, 'cause as, as I told their broker and Dave Messner, who's their main marketing person, I am gonna haunt them until they get over here, because they have that store in Parkston, and ours, with the data shows that we'd be more profitable, so.
Well, and I used to spend, when I lived five miles from Costco, I routinely spent a minimum of 100 bucks a week there.
Yeah.
Absolute minimum.
Yep.
And I've spent probably $200 in the last three years at Costco, 'cause it's, they're over there.
Well, with, with.
Of course, they make more money then too, but.
Well, with the, with the arrival of the revived Blue Mountain Mall.
Yeah.
There's gonna, there's gonna be more interest in locating here because there's more than just one attraction.
Right, yeah.
Business attracts business.
Business, uh, rising tide floats all boats.
Yep.
And I was gonna tell you when you said that, I was thinking about when you said that they didn't like that they, you couldn't turn off a Myra onto Commercial Drive, I was like, well, anybody that you're trying to show around that you're worried about, worry about that, take them to Apple Meats for lunch.
Yep.
Trying to find Apple Meats, like, oh, there it is, but how do I get there?
I see it.
You can't get there from here.
Well, that's it. Cars would be way easier.
Well, is, is there any other, is there any other business that the council would like to chat about?
Are, are Chief Winter and Chief Torres going to be told of our general consensus? Are they gonna be excited about that?
I, I, I will, I will tell both of them.
Yes.
I, I, I will say, Dave is probably gonna fall off his chair.
Does he even know that?
No, he doesn't even know I was gonna hand him the case for, it says, after his last meeting, he was severely bummed, to say the least, I talked to him for a while, so.
I picked that, yeah.
Yeah, like very bummed, so.
Yeah, 'cause we were talking so much about the police.
Right, yeah.
And he specifically mentioned that to me on his way out the door.
And it was just, it's just a long-term thing about the fact that we already get a bargain out of them, and they felt a little bit disrespected, so I had one sit-down with them.
You just, just have to remember, you never ask a fire chief or a police chief, do you need more people or do?
No, 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 we're good.
I'll remember it.
But yeah, it'll make both of them happy.
Good.
But, but the key to police and fire, uh, is that it's measured growth, and, and I feel with the numbers that we proposed, we're being very careful and conservative about it, but it's a need. You can't, you know.
I remember what I was asking, is this, so we were talking about retention and, and doing the cars for the police officers, oh, these are the ones for detectives' maintenance, that's already in.
It's already.
Um, so that's, that's probably gonna help us a little bit, I mean, we're not obviously gonna get anybody from Walla Walla, but they don't have their own cars. And so, I mean, that's, if for, if for a police officer that maybe wants a little perk like that or whatever, like.
It's, it's, the, the general feeling i- is that they're, they're being worked very hard, there's, there's quite a bit of overtime, and, and they, they need a little light at the end of the tunnel saying, we're gonna, we are working to get more than one officer on the streets at a time, so that, so that they're not out there all by themselves hoping that somebody else can arrive to assist them. And, and our partners, the sheriff and the, the city of Walla Walla have been very good about assisting. Um, and, and, you know, we, we just simply haven't had that much difficult violent crime. But it's here. And, and, and I think that's gonna, we're, as, as the city grows a little, we're gonna continue to see that, we're gonna have the one-offs like the, you know, the, they, they just announced that they're not gonna try the older, uh, child involved in the assault at, at the school, be, oh, he's, he's got an IQ of 60, he's basically got the mental capability of a five-year-old, and he's got fetal outfalls.
I know those kids, I know that family, and that's, it's really a mess.
Yeah.
Yeah, my son said, my son was like, he doesn't know.
No.
He's like, he's, that poor kid should not be in jail, he's wearing some sort of a hat.
They're, they're, apparently they're talking about a civil commitment up in Eastern, um, I don't know whether that's gonna go through.
So we'll get the officers, the Blues, Blues Brother, uh, cars, cop cars.
Yeah!
Illinois, Illinois State Police.
Double gum on the top.
500,000 miles on the engine.
And they all get sunglasses.
Radio wire cars, you know?
It's two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
If I have a ticket.
Are we adjourned?
We are, we are.
Lisa, here, let me, let me, let me. Thank you for picking up Interforce.
No, thanks for cooking, Lisa.
Well, it's from dinner, that made it.
Oh, thanks, Harvey.
Thank you, Harvey.
Yeah.
It made it much, much easier.
Yes.
I bought several.
Lisa, can I shut the computer down?
At least I guess I can.
Would you log me off of?